Resume. Let me welcome Mr. Edward Yao, Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development and his team to our meeting. This session is about draft estimates relating to commerce, industry and tourism. As for the trust estimates of community communication and creative industries, we'll deal with that in the next session. He will give some opening remarks and then the floor will be open. Those who would like to speak, please press the request to speak button. Mr. Yao, please walk us through your opening remarks.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. The biggest challenge facing our budget this year is that the current economic situation in Hong Kong is full of headwinds and challenges. Apart from all we know that we're affected by the epidemic, there are two other major factors that have been affecting our economy. And we have not been walking out of this shadow. That one includes the China-US trade conflict and also the social unrest as a result of a series of social incidents. Together with the current epidemic, these three major factors are dealing close to our economy. As for economic growth last year, I would say they were in economic recession. The growth has reduced to 1.2% year-on-year. For the three major indicators for external trade, for the first two months of this year, it dropped by 12%. On retail, we had a record-breaking drop of 44% on travel industry. Tourist arrivals dropped year-on-year by 96.4%. All these present an unprecedented challenge to our economy. In terms of our trade and commerce policies, we need to provide support to tie people over the difficulties in the long term. We also need to be well-prepared. And we have many measures proposed in the budget targeting the different situations I mentioned to provide support for the heavily impacted industries. On tourism, starting from last year, the end of last year to this year, we have rolled out a number of measures, including the Travel Agent Incentive Scheme and Green Lifestyle Local Tourism Incentive Scheme. We hope that against the economic downturn, we can propose supportive measures. However, at this current circumstances, these measures may not give too much help. And therefore, under the Anti-Epidemic Fund, we have put forward the Travel Agent Subsidy Scheme and Licensed Guesthouse Subsidy Schemes, amounting to $280 million. I'm happy to share with members that the subsidy amounts have by and large been dispersed to travel agents and guesthouses. And we have set aside $791 million to the Hong Kong Tourism Board so that we can revive the tourist industry after the epidemic. And after allocating the funds, they will start to plan for their work in the coming year. And under the current epidemic SMEs bed brunt, we've reviewed the situation and agreed that there are resources that we can deploy to help SMEs further, including the BUD Fund and the SME Export Marketing Fund. With the help of the Legislative Council, we still have a residual amount of $5 billion under these two funds for further applications. And we have relaxed the requirements and restrictions to benefit more SMEs over the past year. And I'd like to thank Legislative Council in March for approving the 100% SME Guarantee Scheme, Loan Guarantee Scheme, so that affected SMEs can make use of the scheme. I hope that this scheme can be rolled out in this month. Together with the 80% or 90% SME Financing Guarantee Scheme, we can provide comprehensive support to them. We also understand that there are imminent measures that should be implemented before the epidemic ends. In our budget, we've set aside the $1.2 billion for the convention and exhibition industry. This is, and we also have $614 million allocated to the Trade Development Council, a record-high amount to help the hosting of major and international conventions and exhibitions in Hong Kong. Although we're affected by the epidemic at the moment, we do believe that we should leverage on our existing edge, including the development of Greater Bay Area. Once the economic growth revives, we will tap business opportunities and we'll continue to expand our ETO network by opening up more ETOs. And we'll continue to adopt bilateral and multilateral trade agreement measures. With the funding allocated in this year's budget and through negotiation discussion with the relevant sectors, we will join hands in fighting the epidemic and we to capitalize on our existing advantages. And we'll continue to drive our economy so that so that we can help revive Hong Kong's economy. We'll be happy to take questions from members. We have 18 members waiting to ask questions. It's quite popular. I will only allow, oh, in fact, 19 members, four minutes each. Let me read out the list. Dr. Helena Wong, Mr. Roy Kwong, Mr. Charles Mark, Dr. Chang Chong Tai, Mr. Edward Lau, Mr. Yu Si Wen, Dr. Martin Yao, Mr. Feng Xiao Ping, Mr. Alvin Young, Mr. Michael Tian, Dr. Loai Kwok, Mr. Michael Look, Mr. Wang Ting Kwong, Dr. KK Kwok, Mr. Ma Feng Kwok, Mr. Wu Chi Wei, Mr. Jeremy Tam, Mr. Holden Chow, Ms. Claudia Mo, and Mr. Jeffrey Lam. 20 members. Let's start with Dr. Helena Wong. Chairman, two questions. First, about the economic structure. The secretary gave a report just now, and he focused on commerce and travel industry. But I see you are biased towards commerce and against the industry. Well, if we do not have a local manufacturing industry, then in dire times, we do not even have measures to safeguard our anti-epidemic efforts as we do not have sufficient surgical masks and protective gear. So if other countries are also lack of supply in these areas, we will be sitting on our hands and be sitting ducks. As the lead bureau and the bureau chief, will you adjust the strategy and expedite re-industrialization? By selecting certain industries so that in the current epidemic, there will be resources available to the public. At the moment, it is said that we do not have factories, we do not have investors. That's because you have no policy to help boost the development of the industry. Now, you should not only rely on industries where we enjoy advantages and rely on mainland as the hinterland. If you continue to, you know, harp the same tune about Greater Bay Area and the mainland, we will be dying very soon. If we, people are losing their lives because of lack of surgical masks, it's no point talking about businesses. Next, about travel tourism and consumer protection. In the event of a travel agent folding up under cap 218, consumers who have bought airline tickets will not be able to have the money refunded. There is no compensation. And you cannot cater for those who have booked for other tours and transportation as well. And we have we have some travel agents already folded up. So are you going to amend the travel agents ordinance? I'm referring to the salient points or the key speaking notes of the secretary. Three questions. Manufacturing in Hong Kong accounts for less than 5% of our GDP. However, I mentioned in my speaking notes that in terms of support for local enterprises, we're not confining ourselves to the business sector. For example, we had the BUD Fund, Dedicated Fund on Branding Upgrading and Domestic Sales. We help enterprises upgrade and transform, including upgrading of their factory facilities. This covers Hong Kong as well as neighboring areas. Regarding PPEs, as mentioned by Dr. Helena Wong, the supply chain actually focuses on a number of countries. And the same problem is faced by different countries. It is difficult to boost supply very rapidly. In fact, after rolling out the Anti-Epidemic Fund on the 22nd of February, we have rolled out measures. We have 20 production lines of surgical masks in Hong Kong, and they will be approved. We envisage that by the end of April or May, these subsidized production lines can start their work. Now, about re-industrialization and development of technology, the government has plans. And if, in fact, the IT Bureau will roll out the re-industrialization 4.0. This is interrelated with the whole supply chain. As far as Hong Kong's economic structure is concerned, it's not just about the bigger share of manufacturing in our economy. We need to take a holistic approach. About tourism industry, we take your view. We do have a guarantee scheme which covers, which provides compensation only when two out of three items are covered. Are you going to amend the law? Your time is up. Secretary, a brief response. Mr. Roy Kwong. First of all, Secretary, can I ask you a question? Well, you don't need to answer, Mr. Roy Kwong. Right, because after I ask this question, I'm afraid I may be regarded as preaching the One China Policy and my personal freedom will be taken away. So can I ask you a question? Um, the, right, go ahead. But I, I want him to answer me because the reporter asked a question in a similar manner. Chairman. Well, this is a meeting at the Legislative Council. I think Chairman can decide whether a member is allowed to ask any question. And we also have the rules of procedure to follow. Well, that's really conservative. That's a really conservative answer. You have the potential of running for Chief Executive. Anyway, I am really worried about this question. The reporter asked a question and then the, and then the reporter was criticized. And then there is oppression on RTHK. Well, let me quote this reply number 003. I asked about the salary for the secretary for Commerce, Economic Development. You earn several million dollars a year. This comes from the public office. Well, Secretary, recently, a reporter asked a question and then you chum out to say that the reporter goes against the One China Policy. It's really perplexing. Reporters should enjoy press freedom in asking questions. Are you depriving them of freedom of the press? First of all, I'd like to remind Mr. Roy Kwong that this question relates to the next session, not this one. Anyway, 003 relates to his salary. I need him to answer me because we have value for money in mind. This is the Legislative Council. Well, Chairman, since you allow this question, please answer, Secretary. Can you answer this question on your salary? I don't understand Mr. Roy Kwong's question. Is it related to the salary? I think I've already provided an answer in writing. We have one and a half minutes to go, Secretary. According to the written reply, the annual salary coming from the public office is $4.18 million. It's a matter of value of money, valuable money. It also relates to whether we will move amendments in due course. Now, I have this question. The RTHK reporter a few days ago put forward a question, which is the fundamental duty of a reporter. In fact, the reporter was right on the spot. And then you interfere with the reporter's press freedom, freedom of the press. I need to remind you once again, Mr. Roy Kwong as Chairman, that this question actually relates to next session. Well, this question relates to the salary of the secretary. Because if I am not happy with this answer, I'm going to dock us pay. Well, please allow him to answer my question in this session. Give me an extra 30 seconds, please. Well, we, we should let Secretary decide whether to answer this question on pay. Well, you spent three and a half minutes and you can't still figure out an answer to my question. Any response, Secretary? I respect your decision, Chairman. I think that Mr. Roy Kwong asked a question about RTHK. I'm happy to take his question in the next session.
Mr. Kwong, he said that he would say for the next session when it come to the creative industries and broadcasting. Secretary, do you think you're worth this 4.18 million?
Yes, Secretary, you're interfering into RTHK or even clapping down on the direct broadcasting. Do you think you're worth this pay? Secretary, decide whether you want to take this question or not.
Well, I would not accept the second part of this remark. On the first part of the question, I will leave the public to judge. Next, Mr. Charles Mark.
What do follow up on CIT258? On the Hong Kong startups and especially the Invest Hong Kong support for them. So now I want to ask, well, at this time in the epidemic, and with such a dire market conditions, and what's the support for the entrepreneurs and startups? A lot of companies come from abroad and these companies may need to think twice since they couldn't go anywhere now. And it also epidemic affect Invest Hong Kong's work and a lot of the local companies or those who, companies arrive and set up shop in Hong Kong. I think a lot of them have told me that they are in deep water. The problem they face, for example, there's no income. And yet they have to make full rent payment. And also, some projects supported by your bureau and some sectors, for example, and like e-sport, more than half would be expected to close. The silver lining is that some of these startups are in the Science Park and Cyberport and don't need to pay rent for six months. And this is not enough. And to a certain extent, to relate to inequality. Though while the other companies outside Cyberport and Science Park does not have this rent waiver. So for the second round of relief measures, I hope you can do something for them. For all these years, you mentioned you would support for IT and startups. When it come to this juncture, a large chunk of these companies will not survive this epidemic and fold. That will mean our effort have wasted. So here my request for the second round of relief support measures. Can you really able to cater for the short-termists, for example, the rent pressure, for example, offering cash subsidy to make their rent? And let's say, meaning 80% of their payrolls. So that they promise not to lay up anybody. I wonder, can you include these measures into your second round? I don't think they have much time.
Mr. Yao, thank you, Mr. Mark's question. As for the IT sector, under the budget and the Anti-Epidemic Fund, they have some measures target for them. For example, like Mr. Charles Mark said, in the Science Park or Cyberport, we have some relief measures and some of the cover all sector. For example, the, all the waiver and reductions in the budget to benefit all sector per se. Well, currently, all sectors and economy are be affected. As for the IT sector, I need to defer to Secretary Yang for ITB. As for what Mr. Charles Mark said, the challenges faced by the companies and where my ambit is concerned, there are some existing measures that can help. Including the, well, for something, IT sector can also apply the BOD Fund and the Export Marketing Fund. You can't use the BUD Fund to pay your rent or something. In terms of loans on the March 21st, we have passed the SME Financial Guarantee Scheme and Loan Guarantee Scheme, and hopefully can be launched very soon and offer concrete assistance. And also, we noticed that demands of different sectors require further government assistance. The CEO had mentioned that we look into that where is possible, there could be new measures. Uh, that something a lot of directions as cited by Mr. Mark. Next, Dr. Chang Chong Tai. My question is 070. And for different sectors, especially beauty sector, beauty, wedding clothes and fitness services, and telecommunications and the time share like memberships. On the complaint statistics, I wonder if the bureau noticed that a drop in single year may not have to do with less complaints or maybe because these kind of companies have closed down. I hope that the bureau can step up its work, especially on travel club memberships on the unscripted selling tactics. Because my colleague were undercover and got beaten up by those operators. I hope that the bureau can really take the legislative route to amend the law. Another question. Well, I meant no offense, Mr. Yao. I seem to get the impression, well, the food health bureau seems to be the dirty team working for the government, for example, of this group gathering ban and all such. When it come to CEDB, the committee has expectation that whether can do something more to help the business sectors. My first question, when it come to the second round of Anti-Epidemic Fund measures, well, a lot of them not able to benefit under SFGS and SGS. I wonder, can you reach out to those that are trapped in between? For some sectors, if we help them, you need to check their license, for example, like a production house or playgroup operators or shops in the industrial buildings. They are not listed companies. However, they will not be eligible under all these terms of these current schemes. For example, at dance schools or art centers, you ask them to go to the EDB, well, kind of rather embarrassing because the EDB might not have much regular room there. Of the sectors industry I mentioned, I wonder can the bureau can work on that? And also, a question on external relations. There's some report recently. Let's say the Australian Council General and New Zealand Council General and Taiwan, so not able to get their work visa. Well, for the council not able to obtain their work visa may become a political issue. Is it because some countries have closed access to China? I wonder the bureau can take notice that for the past year, the Hong Kong has a free market that arouse my public attention. I hope you can send a positive messages to our business sector. Two questions on the supplement Anti-Epidemic Measures and External Relations. As for the time share memberships, I agree with Dr. Chang for any such complaints to be made, whether the Customs Exports Department or involving criminal intimidation, they should call the police. That would continue to take, keep in view. In our, the measures in the Epidemic Fund would target different sectors, and yet there are lots of different industries. We closely see there are 72 occupations, and actually there are many more. Sometimes we might left out some. Well, at the last FC meeting, we explained that that what not only at benefit designated sector, some of them actually would cover all industries. For example, the budget would give a 10 daily cash handles for everyone, or some kind of tax concessions. We'll continue to keep this in view. While coming, going forward, besides targeting certain industries, we need to look whether the industries are hit hardest. For example, we take the legislative route and order closure of certain establishments still may be hit quite hard. Or for example, tourism industry, so that we'll put more focus on. And for other sectors, I noticed, Doc, next motion, and the issue of work visa for councils. The immigration had a standing policy and which we could only take note. Next, Mr. Lapo Fan. CIT2A64. Well, the tourism and catering industry has been hit very hard. And for, and for this industry, the government always some kind of help. And yet, you need to help them to ride through the storm. And you see that the hotel industry have yet to get any support. In last December, the Hong Kong average hotel occupancy dropped to 61%. And first quarter of this year, I wonder if you can share with us some figures and how low did it dropped? A lot of those working in hotel industry and claim their hotel, the government have failed to provide any assistance. I hope you can provide to them. I would propose for the government that a lot of the students returning overseas from Hong Kong or others returning abroad will need to be put under quarantine. Have we discussed with the hotels to actually book the entire hotels to allow these overseas returnees to have their mandatory quarantine at hotels? I believe that besides helping to control the epidemic and also help the hotel industry as a whole, in a lot of other places, they also have designated quarantine centers that include hotels. May I ask the government what support you have for hotel industry? And you also take, and you, and take a book of entire hotels at quarantine centers. That all the sectors related tourism, including hotels, were benefited. The hotel occupancy rate is all-time low. For, well, for last, the fun, first round, we have no specific support for hotels. We're offering for guesthouse for 60, 80,000. Well, we also have the benefits of hotels beside their waiver and reduction of rents and rents and rates, and we also have offer as to which electricity fees of reduction, which aid to benefit a lot of hotels. However, we noted your comments. And for Mr. Lau's question, whether the hotels can help with the mandatory quarantine? We have a lot of discussion on this. And through discussing with hotels and the health authorities. Well, when it was first proposed, that, when the first idea, whether hotels can be used in quarantine center, there was some controversy because the health authorities were concerned whether central aircon and the equipment and the support were able to comply with the requirements. And we, and as you see, there's a crucial become a hotbed for transmission. Therefore, we act very prudently. As whether we can turn an entire hotel as quarantine centers. We try that, but there's some difficulty. Sometimes the owner may be willing, but however, they were concerned the the opposition of nearby residents, though they may willing, however, they're not able to proceed. And for those overseas returnees, they might not need to be quarantined. However, out of safety, they choose not to live with their family. Thus, as you can see, there are more such kind of customers in the future. Well, for the time being. And some of the hotels have discussed with us that they will accept those who are subject to home quarantine, that after the end of March, the quarantine orders will allow them to do the quarantine at home. So the health authorities, we need to advise on the hotels on how to receive such kind of guests to minimize the risk of transmission. We're currently, we'll continue to discuss with hotels and health authorities for other individual circumstances or for potentially convert and booking entire hotel. We never give up on that.
Ms. Yu Si Wen, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Edward Lau referred to the issue. I hope the secretary will take this into consideration in the next round of Anti-Epidemic Fund to help hotels, in other words. Some are managed by property developers. We do have small owners and they may rent the whole building for hotel operation. You may have some form of support in terms of electricity bills and CNI discharge. More support should be provided under the Anti-Epidemic Fund. I hope you give it a thought. And I'd like to pick up on 198 about the travel. And I'd like to pick up on one nine eight about the travel agency incentive scheme. The travel agents incentive scheme was launched in light of the social incidents happening last year affecting both outbound and inbound tourists. And later on, the green lifestyle local tour incentive scheme was also launched as of the end of fa- uh January, however, because of the. Um outbreak of the COVID nineteen disease. The whole tourism industry had come to a standstill as the secretary put it in March, the figures dropped by ninety eight percent. So travel agents now had zero income. For some of the industries, the operators may still have reduced income, whereas for travel agents, they are they have no income at all. Now, the previous criteria are that you can only apply when you have um clients. Now that they have no clients, can you take a more relaxed approach so that they have some form of relief in these hard times, Secretary? Thank you, Mister Yu Se Weng, for his comment on hotels. Your views have been heard about the two schemes launched earlier. The original thinking was that past the end of last year with a drop in arrival figures, we wanted to help travel agents. We had a cash incentive scheme for travel agents. I recall. Some twenty one million dollars were approved. At that time, the arrival figure stood at a hundred and twenty five thousand. The funds have not been exhausted, and that is why the scheme has been extended to this year. As for G L I S, Green Lifestyle Local Tour Incentive Scheme, indeed, the situation is rather tricky. Originally, there was light at the end of the tunnel. Uh we could help organize local tours instead of receiving inbound tourists. But now, because of the epidemic, we only received two applications from travel agents. Now, for the second sti- scheme, it is very difficult to make adjustments. The Environment Bureau has kindly uh set aside funds under their policy um bureau's purview for our scheme. And we need to give it a further thought how we can further benefit travel agents. We'll work on it. Um and anyway, your view has been heard. Next, one nine three, about the funding for Hong Kong Tourism Board. I support increased funding for Hong Kong Tourism Board. Due to the outbreak, I we don't know when things will be come normal again. I don't know whether you have arrangements in place to make sure that funds can be utilized properly. I'll refer to my colleague to take your question. Mister Deng Chang. Once the epidemic subsides, we do have a series of promotional uh activities. We also have the government's support and we have been allocated. Funds and we have plans in the pipeline. However, we need the epidemic to uh subside before we can move forward. We do have the estimates in mind. We have some four hundred million dollars available. And we'll be supporting our industry. Next, Doctor Martin Yao. Chairman, in the past six months. I believe the C N I sector's concern has been. Social unrest in Hong Kong, U S-China trade conflict, and also global economic outlook apart from COVID nineteen disease. Yesterday. The Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, when attending our meeting, admitted that quite a number of economists. Have expressed pessimism towards global, the global econom- economy and. There would be global economic recession. Hong Kong is no exception. Our economy will take a rapid downturn. But according to C D B C I T zero nine three, Invest Hong Kong. Have been contacting different enterprises around the world through different channels, including seminars, workshops, ex- uh exchanges. Et cetera. They've been collecting views from. Enterprises. And in general, these enterprises are optimistic about Hong Kong's economy, and I am quite astonished because. This reply doesn't seem to be consistent with the current situation. In particular, in the face of social unrest and U S-China trade conflict and the global economic outlook. These factors have emerged long before the onset of the epidemic. So have you noticed the Invest Hong Kong survey outcome and the discrepancy with the current situation? Have you conducted any uh recent survey to tap the pulse of the business sector in Hong Kong so that you can. Devise a relevant responsive measures and policies? My second question is C E D B. C I T zero nine four. The C E D B have allocated extra resources to set up the S M E reach out team, which um commissioned, which was commissioned in January this year. Through meeting S M Es directly, we provide direct support to them. However, with the spreading of the disease. And other factors at play. S M Es may not be able to um have meetings with you. They may have other uh other things on the plate. So I wonder if the team can provide other forms of support to S M Es, for example. Whether you can have advisory service by video conferencing to help S M Es. Tap the right funding schemes and to help answer the questions on funding financing problems instead of uh. Requiring S M Es to make an extra effort. Well, I invite Mister Steven Phillips to take the first question.
Terms of the feedback from investors, um when we're talking to new investors looking at Hong Kong. Um they're considering investment over a three, five, ten year period. Um so they're continuing to see Asia as the engine of global economic growth. Um of course, those companies are facing the short term issues that we know. Um which you mentioned in your question, global potential recession, um COVID and so forth. Um but the investment cycle is quite a long process. So I think that's why we see a different sentiment when we're talking to investors. Um in terms of surveys, we do the annual survey with Census and Statistics Department. That's done as at the first of June each year, uh and that will continue with a cycle. Um many of the international chambers in Hong Kong are doing surveys. Of course, they're members of reporting the short term concerns um in terms of impact on the local economy, what that means. And for their operations, in terms of revenue generation, job security and so forth. So I think there's a range of short term issues and then in the longer term, still confidence in Asia as the region of economic growth.
Okay, uh,殷美美处长，麻烦你就简短回应了。
Well, um we share the views of Mister uh Martin Yao. Through the S M E reach out, we have faced to face meetings with the S M Es, but we're not unable to do that at the moment. So we rely on uh a webinar by way of the internet. I understand that we have held a number of meetings. I believe this is effective. And as things evolve, we will continue to be flexible in supporting S M Es. This is an ongoing work. Next, Mister Pun Siopeng. Thank you, Chairman. In the secretary's opening remark. He mentioned that Hong Kong's economy is subject to three major blows. China-U S trade conflict, the social unrest brought about by the anti-tradition uh incident. And also the epidemic, there may be the fourth factor at play, that is the election. Anyhow, the tourism industry is bearing the brunt, and we see arrival figures have dropped by ninety eight percent year on year. According to practitioners in the industry that we got in touch with, they have not received any income since the end of last year. And they are um finding it hard to make ends meet. I think uh. Unemployment Protection Fund should be set up to help the future development of tourism industry. And I'm referring to zero two four, Mister Tommy Zhou asked a question about the tourism industry. Seven hundred million dollars were allocated to the Hong Kong Tourism Board after last year's setbacks. Well, nobody has the crystal ball to tell when the epidemic will end. You have uh set out three phases in July that will be a major campaign. And two hundred and twenty six million dollars will be spent on launching a global tourism brand campaign to rebuild Hong Kong's tourism image. Now, I don't know the progress. I don't know how we should position ourselves in terms of our tourism image, because. If we don't handle the incidents properly, we can't rebuild our tourism image. Second point. We used to welcome tourists, but now we have a social phenomenon. When tourists come to Hong Kong, uh some business operators benefit, but district and the community. Uh at in general. Suffer from some issues. So I don't think this only relate to your bureau. In terms of parking for tourist coaches, uh shopping mall arrangements. Anything should be done. For example, tax concessions can be provided for those affected at the district level. So that we can complement the development of the industry. Uh I will invite the Hong Kong Tourism Board and also Tourism Commission to take your uh question. Yes, Mister Cheng. Thank you for your question. Now, we have the funds allocated for the purpose of publicity and promotion. The honorable member asked a question on how we should utilize the fund and to rebuild our tourism image. There are two phases. First, we're actively planning for our work. Once the outbreak subsides, we will launch a major brand campaign. But we understand that this epidemic is very different from SARS. Back then, Hong Kong was at the center of the epidemic. After the W H O canceled the travel law against Hong Kong, everything went back to normal very soon. According to historical figures. Other countries and neighboring cities in Hong Kong took a long time to recover. Whereas for Hong Kong, because of the I V scheme, and we received more mainland tourists. And the economy revived only after ten months later. Now, in this epidemic we envisage, a longer time will be taken for our economy to recover. At the same time, we are worried. That by the time we are able to launch the tourism brand campaign. Um we are uncertain what the social atmosphere in Hong Kong is. We also receive funding and part of the funding will be. Spent on rebuilding Hong Kong's tourism image. We hope that by the end of this year and the beginning of next year. There'll be an outcome from our study. This is not just about an advertising and promotion campaign. This is about rebranding Hong Kong. And bring a new experience to tourists coming to Hong Kong. Please give us a succinct response to the second question, Mister Wong, Commissioner for Tourism. About the district issues. It's a common problem faced by other popular tourism destinations. We'll try to um divert tourists to different areas and implement a better district management. In the past, when we developed new tourism products, we have been paying attention to this point. We avoid concentrating tourists in a certain area so that we can allow different districts to benefit.
Mister Alvin Young. Um I have a question on the secretary's targeting uh opening remarks on the uh interest free loan. Well, recently, I have a group of wholesalers get got in touch with me on the first round of uh anti epidemic fund. As they are not retailers, they're not able to benefit from the measures. Would the interest free loan able to help them? According to the secretary. That it will be launched at the end of April. However, this is actually been um in place since two thousand eight. So back then, it was an eighty percent guaranteed product. According to the wholesaler, he spent six months, has been given a hard time by banks. They're unwilling or very reluctant in making such loans. So, Secretary. You, I'd like to thank Letchgo uh for for the passage for the anti epidemic fund. How could you encourage the banks in making out the loans? So that those who are waiting for a lifeline are able to get capital and liquidity. Secretary, thank you, Mister Young's question. Mister Young may have mixed up all the two loan schemes. On twentieth of uh March. What was passed at the Finance Committee is a brand new a hundred percent government backed loan scheme. That's a brand new scheme. Upon the passage on Letchgo, we anticipated what we have a commitment of twenty billion dollars. That would make all company or all professionals and company bickers small. And okay, I make the loans by through a Hong Kong mortgage interest. They need to pay a preference interest rate. It will be about prime minus two point five percent. And also, there will be a principal moratorium. Mister Young had a point. Before we launched this scheme, there were two earlier schemes. Including the uh percent. For example, in the S M E financing guarantee scheme, they've been launched in twenty twelve and two years ago, we have refined it. For example, the ceiling have been lifted twelve to fifteen million, and also the repay repayment period extended and so on. And late last year. You also, Letchgo also approved the ninety percent loan guarantee product. Which targeted professionals, a smaller amount with shorter repayment period. And for the eighty or ninety percent guaranteed product, we also have this one year principal moratorium. All these schemes uh are running concurrently and also can apply more than one at any one time. Really, um based on what the companies, what hope that these three schemes can help the enterprise regardless of the industries. For the history scheme, other listed company, uh all companies respective of size can apply. While the crux of the problem, even though there are quite a few as loan schemes available. But if is the money there, is the bank that originated the loans, according to the wholesaler. It took six months for him to get the loan by the time the company would have closed. Is there any way could a bureau to uh notch the bank to streamline procedures and? While we have provided liquidity and yet uh it was. The money wasn't trickle down. According to eighty ninety percent, that was it are a bank loan with bank guarantees. The newest product have would have approved, that is not a bank loan. But other the H K M C insurance company uh would make out the loans so that the banks would not need to take on the risk. And also, I thought it were able to um address Mister Young's concerns. Whether eighty or ninety percent is pledged for ninety percent scheme, a challenge you may remember, you also help to negotiate with the banks. If the banks obtain all the required documentation and uh will submit to the H K M C. We have this performing pledge of approving the loan within three working days. With all this refiling in place, where for the banks or the HKMC, they were able to approve the loans within a shorter time. Mr. Young, let me supplement. The HKMC is currently um uh organizing a communication platform for SME financing to uh engage the banks on how to uh expedite the loan approval procedures. Just a piece of information for you. Next, Mr. Michael Tian.
Good morning, good afternoon, Secretary. Well, you are the smartest of all uh secretaries, so you definitely will get what I mean. With over of three million working population, the catering and the retail industry made of sixty percent, which mean lots of jobs. Well, you can see a lot of shops closures and where hairstylists and cha-chan tings. And well, a forty-year-old hair salon got closed. And the same case with cha-chan tank, not because the payrolls, the payroll, the employees are always happy to negotiate is the rent. The cruel landlords and the market due and due to um the spirit of the contract, we need to close recently. Does he appeal the landlords to cut the rents, which I echoed earlier? Well, lots of the retailers, most of the shops are probably sold out in pieces. E- even their major developers are willing to cut their rent, it won't help. Well, because, for example, the cha-chan tanks are not really in major shopping malls. Besides, we need to come up with a way. The government must provide some incentive. The government have skin in the game in pushing the landlords to cut the rent. I believe that you have heard my proposal. Well, people at first thoughts is complicated. For example, uh uh triple uh tax benefit, let's simplify with it. If the landlord will he cut the rent by half, the government will offer half of the um tax allowance. It's not by cash though, with abuse. Said when they need to pay taxes, they could be oh, can can actually um offset by using the tax credit. Let's say a landlord, let's say cut the rate for a hundred dollars. Then the rent tenant would pay a hundred dollars less and the landlord got paid a hundred dollars less. And yet, they will enter to fifty dollars tax credit. After the subsiding of the epidemic, well, the rent income will resume and we need to pay um profit tax and there will go where they can make a tax deduction. The best part is the next card. If the rent cut by half, they'll only have the income drop by twenty percent. If they cut the rent by seventy percent, they'll only led to a thirty percent loss of income. If uh make it rent-free, it actually led to forty percent of less tax receipts. Because the whole rent we income will use at the tax credit to offset uh the any uh tax burden. I've talked to a lot of the the landlords. If the government can help this way, they're very happy to negotiate. Well, they only get twenty percent less income by uh cut by half for them is better than uh having their shop vacant. It would take very long time to get a tenant these days. I hope you can explore this simple concept. If you're reluctant for some reason, uh please promise me that the government might come with a proposal instead of just making appeals. That could really um provide incentive for landlords to uh cut the rent. Mr. Secretary. During the epidemic, uh in well, it's a public consensus to ride out the storm together that require a commitment by all. While the government as a landlord, there are two rounds of rent of half waiver. Whether there's any room for further reductions, we can negotiate. I've heard Mr. Tian's proposal on twentieth of March. And there were the other F S T B colleagues here as well. Whereas any taxation arrangements. So the government need to pay one way or the other. It's just the government will uh need to um absorb the income loss. So I will relay this um idea to my colleagues. Next, Dr. Lo Aiqiao. CIT two seven nine. On the CIPA uh service agreement amendment. I believe that this amendment agreement is very good news for the service industry. On November twenty ninth, uh the signing of the green which cover lots of areas. Uh most of them relate to uh building services engineering. In the past, the industries have also facing the problem of uh market entry. Even though under the CIPA framework, it's supposed to be uh a benefit to industries as a whole. However, um due to the different um market practices, the market entry can be difficult. And you can see there are a lot of details, for example, of recognizing uh the accreditation of the Hong Kong engineering sector. And also recognize our experiences unlike in the past. The engineering staff have this mainly experience requirement. So this breakthrough is very much welcome. For the actual implementation, we have to wait till this June. I know that some preparation must be made and some other works need to be done. I'm worried this in in the backdrop of the epidemic. While the government operations also affected. When it come to uh coordination between Hong Kong and China, I'm worried that whether the progress will be affected. Whilst the global economy has to be affected by the epidemic pandemic, the worry that there will be a great is recession looming on the horizon. If the mainland economy remain vibrant and Hong Kong would able to uh create mutual benefit. Upon this passage of the epidemic, I would see that as a key area. So what plans the Secretary have on how to capitalize on this uh potential revival in order to offset uh the negative outlook of the global economy? On the implementation of the CIPA, I'll let I'll have the uh Ms. Yan to give an answer. I'd like to thank Dr. Lo's support for CIPA. In two thousand and nine, on the the services, especially the professional services, engineering services, we have done a lot of work. Uh we have invited Dr. Quat and other professional sectors for advice and or had a coordinate with the Ministry of of Trade. Thus, uh we have managed to um sign the CIPA Services Trade Amendment Agreement. And now, our focus is on the implementation and the um liberalization measures. I agree with Dr. Lo that would expand our uh one-stop-shop service. Well, due to the epidemic, while the promulgation session will will be postponed, however, we never stopped working on it. In the meantime, continue to get in touch with other professional bodies. So that uh by the time that it got uh roll out on the first of June be ready. I'll make sure that my colleagues will talk to the professional sectors. The late half of the year, we want to uh uh deepen the uh implementation of service um uh entry into the mainland. Well, the mainland market is the biggest market with the most potential. Even after the pandemic, in the economic construction, when it comes to uh goods trade and technology application and also on healthcare. So I will see that there's a huge potential for this. Our inherent advantages, for example, of the Belt and Road and for the uh G B A. And we discussed, sharing with the uh David Chamber of Commerce to ask that whether the early preparation work would be obstructed. Uh the areas are cited by Dr. Lo, the professional service sector is important. Because uh whether for a construction or trade, which require professional services. And the CIPA Amendment Agreement would able to open up the mainland markets for our professional sector. We'll continue to stick with this direction.
Mr. Michael Look, thank you, Chairman. Last year, the black clouds caused a series of violent acts impacting on our economy. I'd like to refer to one oh nine, C D B C O, CIT one oh nine. The tourism industry bears a brunt. And it is said in the reply that the government provides subsidy to travel agents and licensed hi guest houses. Some one thousand uh travel agents and guest houses benefited. However, the government fails to reply to the other part of the question because of lack of statistics and frontline practitioners don't stand to benefit at all. For tour guides, to uh travel escorts, et cetera, they receive zero income. Staff members of guest houses have been laid off as only the owner of guest houses run the one man band. So I'd like to know when the government will introduce measures to help frontline practitioners. There should be cash support, unemployment support, targeting the travel industry as well as guest houses. And also uh assistance given to frontline practitioners. Secretary, thank you, Mr. Look for the question. Well, Mr. Look, in the past already reflected the problem facing frontline practitioners to us. In the budget and the measures rolled out earlier, we strived to help um and boost the tourism industry. In fact, one thousand seven hundred travel agents already received the subsidy. That means despite the difficult circumstances, these travel agents have continued their operation. Of course, I understand Mr. Look's question. That is to say, how we can ensure that assistance can also be provided to frontline practitioners, we'll give it a thought. Supporting enterprises and protecting jobs is a good ideal, but reality is harsh. Secretary, you must understand the dire situation facing frontline practitioners. They struggle to make ends meet. The other question is one oh eight. Let's look ahead. In your reply, you mentioned in promoting the development blueprint for Hong Kong's tourism industry, you actually cited the litany of uh work and initiatives. However, these initiatives have not responded to the situation in the past year. That means uh we're no longer a hospital city. Because of the black clouds, there were people who blatantly assaulted tourists, who detained uh tourists in the at the airport and they vandalized shops. Now, tourists are deterred from coming to Hong Kong, especially mainland tourists. Even foreign tourists no longer are no longer keen to come to Hong Kong. The point is, how do we rebuild ourselves as a hospital city? How do we rebuild our image? I agree with Mr. Look that no matter the tourist destination, tourists would like to put safety first. So, safety is one major attraction uh as a hospital hospitable city. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, one of the negative factors affecting our economy has been the anti-extradition incident. So, we need to salvage confidence um of the tourists. Well, it's not just about being confident. They also need to um be able to experience happiness. They must not be subject to discriminative treatment because we are city of hospitality. Well, Mr. Look, I think Secretary Noctio view. Well, we agree with him and at the same time, we're grateful to frontline practitioners for trying very hard to receive tourists. In the end of last year, many major events, conventions and exhibitions continued to be held because the organizers had walked the extra mile to ensure that tourists arriving in Hong Kong could remain safe and could have a positive experience. Next, Mr. Wang Ting Kwan. Thank you, Chairman.
The Hong Kong government has made a lot of effort in fighting the epidemic. This should be acknowledged. After the first round of the anti-epidemic fund, I believe the second round will come soon. In terms of supporting enterprises and protecting employment, much more should be done. But I don't think the government will relax its effort. I do have another question, though. I'd like the Secretary to consider within this financial year, in the future, how we should boost our economy? In the post-SARS period, we developed the individual tour uh visit scheme. And because of that, our economy revived very rapidly. However, when this epidemic subsides, I can't really think of ways to help our economy recover. Secretary. Is it time to gather manpower and resources and plan properly how we should boost Hong Kong's economy after the economy uh after the epidemic? Supporting enterprises and protecting employment is, of course, imminent. But I think there's something more important ahead of us after the epidemic ends. What's your thinking, Secretary? I thank Mr. Wong for his comments. I think this is an issue close to the heart of Latcho members as well as our society. We're facing some hard times. We have twenty-four initiatives under the anti-epidemic fund. Not all measures are imminent and short-term measures. In fact, there is an item relating to the convention and exhibition industry. We have over ten million uh dollars in response to what is put forward by Mr. Wang Ting Kwan. Because we need to be prepared, because in the next cycle, otherwise, the uh the conventions and exhibitions won't be held in Hong Kong. And that is why we are dishing out money uh on this uh front so that participants and organizers of conventions and exhibitions can rely on the subsidy. And in this year's budget, the subsidy provide or the venture provided to the Hong Kong Tourism Board has increased. Such as the H K T B. Their work is divided into different phases. In the first phase, they are actively making preparations, albeit no activities are held. And I think there is still room for improvement. For example, different sectors may have different ways to tackle the problem. For example, in the business sector, when they cannot hold face-to-face meetings, they would rely on technology, as I mentioned in the, as I will mention in the next session. Five G network will be rolled out in April so that the Internet of Things can be implemented and more resources will be deployed to help enterprises, individuals or industries as a whole to apply technology more extensively. Even then, service delivery models can change. As for support for SMEs, we have four organizations working together to help with promotion. Um and we are taking things online. We are all preparing for our future work. So I thank Mister Wong for his comment. Mister Wong. Simply put, many government departments uh have expenditure, not uh revenue. Uh you are one of um the departments um making money for the government, so you need to tap new sources for us to have a to for us to improve people's livelihood. Doctor K K Quoc. Mister Michael Look from F T U referred to the Black Clats, and I have a question for the secretary. Because Carrie Lam, your boss, tried to bulldoze the uh the extradition bill. Have you assessed the monetary loss as a result of the series of incidents involving protests protests and police brutality? Well, who is after all the mastermind if not Carrie Lam? No, this is a question for the secretary. She should take the blame and what is the monetary loss involved in the latter half of last year? Because of the social conflicts arising from um the extradition bill leading to a series of violent and unlawful acts, we all paid a heavy price for it. I understand where Doctor Quoc is coming from and his position. I think on the whole, we should understand from these incidents that peace is the only way out. We need to abide by the law and we must find ways to restore calmness in society and have mutual respect to each other and also respect the law. No matter the reason, if one resorts to violent and unlawful acts, it would deal a blow to the law and order in Hong Kong and everybody will suffer. This is not only about crunching numbers. This will also have a negative impact on the business environment in Hong Kong. Secretary, I was only asking you for figures. You don't need to need to give me a speech. Now, Carrie Lam pushed for the extradition bill. I'm talking about the monetary economic loss. You're in charge of uh economic development, right, Secretary? I just want a figure. Chairman. I don't think the figure represents what Doctor Quoc said about the loss of G D P. Well, as I mentioned in the opening remarks, for last year's economic situation, we had a negative economic growth of one point two percent. This is coming from Mister Paul Chen. Uh he said we lost two percent G D P in twen- uh twenty seventeen, the G D P stood at three hundred and forty billion dollars. That means we're short of six point eight billion now. So in other words, um she caused a loss of fifty million dollars. Now, you have close contacts in the business sector and back then, the business sector, even the property sector made strong appeals to the government to um withdraw the extradition bill. As secretary, how did you fulfill your responsibility? Did you tell Carrie Lam not to go ahead with this unpopular bill which has caused numerous losses to our society? Well, Doctor K K Quoc, we are focusing on commerce and economic development here. I know, but it's uh just a futile attempt, no matter how much money you're putting in. Right, you can ask about the estimates for for the purpose. Chairman, the government economists conducted a major projection or assessment. That is, the economic loss caused by the social conflicts and unrest uh as a result of the incident last year. And it's true, there is a loss of two percent G D P. We explained the situation on different occasions already. However, to respond to the problem, we need to restore calm and law and order in society. This is most important.
Doctor Quoc, one line. Okay, simple food. If we can turn back the clock, would you dissuade Carrie Lam? Or try, I'll tell her not to be so stubborn. Mister Yao, will you take the question?
I say, I clearly uh uh spell the government's uh position. I disagree with Miss Doctor Quoc's observation. Mister Ma Feng Quo, I'd like to follow up on C I T one one two and two one five. For one one two, the government respond claims that in light of the epidemic, the H K T B have canceled four events. And with the epidemic running, that those with strong brand image, for example, Art the Hell as Re Seven's and the Art Festival uh either been canceled or postponed. And Hong Kong Sevens will now be postponed to October and hopefully it would be held by then. What measures the government adopt to help the organizers in terms of their promotion? And so as to uh reset the economy, would you uh reconsider uh to introduce some kind of mega events to kickstart the tourism and sector and the economy? The second question. A lot of the um cultural and exchanges have come to a standstill. A lot are E T Os or uh the mainland E T Os. What plans do they have aft- after the pandemic subsided? To 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 uh resume the cultural activities? And also to uh resort external promotion economic activity? I'll defer to H K T B Mister Dean Chang to take the first question.
The mega events are a key tourism magnet for Hong Kong. And last year, in light of the circumstances, we have canceled quite a few mega events. And and also due to the pandemic, we have uh canceled the International China's New Year of New Carnival. From October onwards and quite a few of them already postponed till October. For example, the Hong Kong Sevens are now postponed till sixteenth of October. And there are also quite a few. I'm asking what measures to help them promote it. I already read them out already. For these kind of activities, we have uh discussing a boosting promotion for them because there will be a large scale campaign in October. They're from October all the way to next March. Because quite a few uh mega events in succession besides uh hopefully they can hold events as scheduled, we also want to create this um ambience. Besides the event, that we also need to stir up the atmosphere. And we also um engage the event organizers, create new mega events. Very often, the tourists are attracted to attend some kind of mega events.
Well, what new mega events you're talking about? You're using up my time but not giving the answers I want. Still under discussion. Mister Yao.
Well, like Mister Chang said, well, as soon as the pandemic subsided, there will be a in terms of investment or tourism promotion, there will be a like an income done as a whole. For individual activities, we look at the M I C E, there's always a key event every month. Some of them must be retained. Like I said, like uh Mister Ma mentioned, for the large mega events, for example, Art Basel, through our hundred and tenth subsidy scheme, we're able to confirm that the one four oh two million subsidy debt, they have assured that they return next year. However, besides the existing ones, when we want to jumpstart economy and tourists, there any uh new thematic activities, these are into works, I believe that will work with different organizations and business sector, whether locally or abroad. As for overseas promotion, and not only our C I T branch, we also work with the uh H A uh B to work with uh cultural exchanges. So our office will always support this line of work and will do something in the future. Next, Mister Wuchihua.
I'll do follow up my own two replies, one eight eight and one eight four. The government have a lot of plan to support the SMEs. But uh it failed to answer my question that those in sectors do not include in the anti epidemic method. Besides all this uh loan scheme, we have other scheme, for example, cash cash handouts. I believe that this will adopt in many countries, for example, like Denmark and the U K. And I proposed them back in February, whether I can offer matching funds for companies. Besides uh getting the immediate relief uh with government support, that also could protect the jobs as well. I didn't get an answer for this. Can the secretary reply? A second question. On the uh interest rate of the S F G S is quite high. In the eighty percent guarantee product, the average rate is four twenty eight eight percent. But ninety percent's guaranteed scheme, the average interest rate is six point eight percent. And these two scheme will require a personal collateral. I wonder if the bureau have assessed it, how many businessmen would uh risk a high interest rate in checking out these loans? The second question that when business dried up, even if we have this hundred percent loan guarantee product, they would not wanted to take the risk, think they'll be liable to pay and yet there are no income. Would the government would rely on making loans to the shop owners and businessmen for just all the immediate relief? Or you need to adopt new strategies to help them ride out this economic winter? For example, uh cash handouts for all those sectors not covered by the Anti-Epidemic Fund? Because we know that there are so many industry affected, not those chosen that we include in the fund. And each sector facing a more or less some kind of difficulty. Secretary, would you consider that down the road, you would offer more help to these companies? Three questions here. Secretary Yao.
Well, for the existing scheme, those offering direct assistance or recording or Mister Wu uh matching scheme fund this are available or to fund or front of the B U D and the E N F on on a matching basis. And when we get additional injection from Lashco, these two funds have still about five billion in balance. And we have invited each business associations to invite applications because this fund would help the market promotion and upgrading and so on. And the Anti-Epidemic Fund at the first stage will target the hardest hit industries. Of course, there will be some left out. Back in our discussion in March, we have noticed it already. So in the budget, we also have this universal measures. For example, a tax relief and rent uh reduction or waivers. So secretary have got no new ideas to cope with those industries have left out. For example, the beauty services, tier two centers and laundry services. That mean there will be no new measures for them. And second, you're still asking me to check out loans, but you have no business. And uh this doesn't make sense. The C I T mentioned it in our latest round. We learned uh from the first round that whether there are other refinements or supplements. I've been mindful of Mister Wu's comments. And if for those uh also financing schemes, I've heard from industry feedback, well, cash handle is always the best. However, we can't just give cash handouts for every company. They they claim that liquidity is the key instead. So all three schemes, even though Mister Wu have cited the eighty or ninety percent or the interest rate range from uh five to seven percent. That's why we need to launch the hundred percent loan guarantee product. Interest rate is as low as uh two point six or two point seven five percent. So we have taken in the views of the industry making such adjustments. To running out of time, the last member will be Mister Holden Chow. Thank you, Mister Chairman. So uh O two seven.
And for the S M E financing guarantee scheme, for the hundred percent loan guarantee product, on many occasions, I had stated on the principal moratorium. In theory, the government reclaimed the moratorium for six months. I think the the most ideal of necessary could be a six or nine or even twelve months. Because we don't know how long this epidemic will last. And you need to give some time for anybody to recover after the epidemic subsided and and also to obtain more liquidity. And also my question touches on the eighty or ninety percent guarantee product. I wonder for these two products, I wonder if you can offer a six months mo- moratorium or even longer? I hope the secretary can reply. Now that the pandemic is raging, we hope to safeguard jobs. And for s- we're talking about that by the way, there are second relief measures is launched with a co- uh cover or close to little, for example, uh tutorial centers and beauty services. In terms of protecting jobs, can the government consider protecting jobs, including those who are underemployed or those who are self-employed? You can include them in your uh allowance, cash handouts. For example, hotel industry, which has been quite hit quite hard. While there's not any uh subsidy scheme to target hotels, however, they hired lots of people. I wonder you can really providing support at to those working in the sector or those underemployed? Thank you, Mister Yao views. As for the hundred percent loan guarantee product, whether you can extend the principal moratorium uh for the support of hotel industry and support for the self-employed, so your views have been noted. Well, for the eighty or ninety percent loan guarantee scheme, the moratorium is already extend to one year, so which is six months plus six months. I believe Mister Chow would welcome this and other views have been noted as well. So we shall adjourn the meeting here. The next segment will be at five ten.